Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Comnic.
Here.
Councilmember Colomer.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to ask everybody in the tent to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in honor of our troops. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for religious enemies, one nation under God, indivisible, with one and absolute justice for all. Thank you. Did you want to do that before the? So we are going to move item A on the new agenda up. We're going to remove, move item A of the new business up to now. We're going to do that before we do the consent agenda. Tyrone, we'll start with you.
All right, sir.
Did you want to move this first way again? Did you want to? Raise your hand. I, Tyrone Baker.
I, Tyrone Baker.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
Having elected office of council member.
In and for the city of Kewaunee.
In and for the city of Kewaunee.
And the county of Henry.
And the county of Henry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member of the city of Kewaunee.
Of the council member of the city of Kewaunee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Raise your hand. I, Adam Cernovich.
I, Adam Cernovich.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
Having been elected to the office of council member.
In and for the city of Kewaunee.
In and for the city of Kewaunee.
And the county of Henry.
And the county of Henry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the council, of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Of the city of Kewaunee.
Of the city of Kewaunee.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
No, he's not. He just came off.
Let me get it. Let me get it. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we will move to consent agenda items. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda. Considered routine in nature if we pass as one whole rule to the council. Should any member of the council or the audience wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration, please say so now and remove and consider following approval of the remaining consent items. Consent items include minutes from the closed session and council meeting on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five payroll for the pay period ending April nineteenth in the amount of two hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-six cents, staff reports, and Bach report. Do I have motion to approve consent agenda items? No moves.
Same.
Please call a roll.
Councilmember Comnic.
Hi.
Councilmember Colomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Hi.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
Mayor Moore.
Hi.
Next, we have approval for the bills for April twenty-eighth in the amount of two hundred forty-six thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Do I have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
No moved. Second.
And any discussion?
I had a couple here. We have a couple subscriptions for ChatGPT. Do we have a public generative AI policy in place currently?
That would be not, not that I'm aware of the city whole, citywide. There may be some within the departments.
Yeah, we do. The police department does.
Okay.
Policy for that's pretty common.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we had something in place.
Absolutely.
Because we probably, we probably should do it citywide as well.
It's pretty, we can, we can fit everybody.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Yeah. And then I got one other one here. Let me scroll through. For the Illinois Commerce Commission, there's a penalty fee. What was that associated with? Six hundred and twenty-five dollars?
We hit something digging.
Okay. All I got.
Who else? Please call a roll.
Councilmember Colomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Hi.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
Councilmember Comnic.
Hi.
Mayor Moore.
Hi.
Okay, next we'll move on to public comments. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council regarding anything not on the agenda, please step up to the microphone, state your name, and please keep in mind there's a three-minute time limit, and speak loudly and clearly so that residents are viewing, that are viewing from their homes are able to hear you. What is for public comments? So we'll move on to new business. We already took care of item A, so we'll start with item B. Bill number two-five-dash-three-three, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local seven sixty-four. The resolution, as well as the next two, were tabled from our April fourteenth meeting. We request additional information from the city manager. Once approved, this bill will execute a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local seven sixty-four. Ask me represents our public works employees and our front-end clerics at City Hall. Do I have a motion?
No moved. Second.
And any discussion? Call a roll.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Hi.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
Councilmember Comnic.
Hi.
Councilmember Colomer.
Hi.
Mayor Moore.
Hi.
Item C, Bill number two-five-dash-three-four, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge two thirty-three. We have a working contract with the International Association. Got mixed up? This will, this resolution will authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to enter into a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Local two thirty-three FOP. Represents not only police officers, but all our telecommunicators as well. Do I have a motion?
No move. Second.
Any discussion on this one? Call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
Councilmember Comnic.
Hi.
Councilmember Colomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Hi.
Mayor Moore.
Hi.
And item D, Bill number two-five-dash-three-five, resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local five thirteen. We have a working contract with the International Association of Firefighters Local five thirteen that will soon expire. The resolution will allow the city to enter into an agreement with our fire department members for the next three years. Do I have a motion? No moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Call the roll.
Councilmember Comnic.
Hi.
Councilmember Colomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Hi.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
Mayor Moore.
Hi.
Item E, Bill number two-five-dash-three-six, resolution expressing the intent of the city council regarding water service related to multiple properties owned by Kewaunee Properties LLC. Do I have a motion?
No moved. Second.
And discussion?
I was going to just request some explanation from, on the options from our city attorney and city manager on this one.
Last week was exciting as it came to this case. As of Tuesday, the receiver sought a temporary restraining order from the court in Henry County attempting to block us from shutting off the water as they had gotten.
Just so everybody knows, this is in reference to the trailer parks in Kewaunee and the ongoing situation with water that we have there. I'm sorry, I should have explained that further.
So as I was saying, as of Tuesday of last week, the receiver, which was the individual the court installed to manage these properties while this foreclosure was ongoing, sought to get a court order blocking us from being able to shut off the water. That ultimately ended up heard on Wednesday morning. We prevailed, the tiara was denied, but the court made it clear he wanted everyone to sit down and work something out such that we could avoid shutting the water off. Now, my recommendation to the council is on looking at what Ira Lauder, which is the appointed receiver, had suggested that he would pay from when he took over, January twenty-seventh, up through the present and ongoing, to make sure that they're current with respect to from the point he took over, and to stay current on that. In exchange, the city would not shut the water off during the pendency of these proceedings. Now, this does not address the portion of the arrears that is potentially attributable to the bank and Shapiro, which was the prior receiver. This is only dealing with from when Ira took over to the present, and as a solution to keep us from having to shut the water off while this is ongoing, while we sort out the rest of it.
So what amount are we talking about here from January when Ira took over to the present versus the total amount due?
It is approximately eighty thousand dollars is the amount that is from when Ira took over. Taking into account the bills that are going out on Wednesday for the three-oh-one properties, that is approximately eighty thousand. Approximately two hundred or so thousand from my estimation would be attributable to Shapiro, and anything prior to that was on Kewaunee Partners prior to the filing of the foreclosure.
And what's the total bill up right now?
Approximately, what, five hundred thousand or so?
It's close to five hundred thousand now.
Close to five?
Yes.
So if we collect this eighty thousand, we're essentially collecting that, and we're going to be able to continue to collect current bills. How are we going to get the extra four hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of this?
The first step is getting judicial approval for Ira to write that check because of the size of it. Once that is ongoing, this foreclosure will wend its way to a conclusion. As part of that, as I may or may not have mentioned previously, when a receiver is installed by the court, they're basically acting as a manager. Their job is to treat a piece of property the same way a reasonably prudent owner would do it. In other words, how you would take care of your own house, or how you would manage a trailer park as someone paying attention to what's going on. Well, part of our major issue is, the original receiver that the bank wanted appointed sat on their hands, at least that's what our position largely is. They were telling Keith that they were doing all of this work out there, cleaning things up and dealing with the leaks and such, and nothing happened for the better part of nine months, which is where we ultimately got involved, called them out for that, brought it to the court's attention, which is where the bank stepped up and had Shapiro replaced with Ira at that point. So ultimately, that receiver is the one that dropped the ball, but it's the bank's job to make sure that they've got an eye on the receiver, that they were doing ultimately what they were supposed to be doing. So there's more litigating to be done as part of the foreclosure later on in the process. They moved to try to add us as a defendant so that they could try to wipe our lien off as part of that foreclosure process, and I opposed that, pointing out, hey, we didn't have notice that they were dropping the ball on this all the way through till this point. That hasn't been heard by the court yet. That's coming up later this month.
So, I mean, the, the bank offered us a hundred thousand, was it, as a settlement, and to wash away three hundred something thousand. We're going to collect eighty, I mean.
But to be clear, that is eighty just with respect to keeping it on now.
I get it.
As things are going forward. We're not forgiving anything.
No.
Else on this with what we're doing.
Right.
We're guaranteeing we're not giving up.
I just want to make sure that we're not looking, you know, at this from a standpoint of we got eighty, and then we could have got a hundred, and we got eighty now, and maybe not, maybe not have the potential to collect the rest of it. Because I mean, it's a substantial amount of money that they owe us, and I want to make sure that we're doing, like, we have the right steps in place to collect the rest of that money.
Correct. Ultimately, it will be up to a judge whether or not that portion of this lien is subservient to that mortgage. Right now, all they're asking is, we take for what Ira actually has control over, because he's only responsible from when he took over going forward. So I can get that as a bird in the hand because he's willing to do that out of the gate. It doesn't say we can't collect any of the rest of this, or there's not responsibility for any of the rest of this.
That's all I want to make sure.
That was my concern is.
Yeah, then we're not.
Yeah, they don't want to wash.
Correct.
Four hundred and twenty thousand dollars down the drain without giving up, you know.
But the judge can say no, right? The judge can say no?
The judge is not going to object with this because the court's biggest concern was making sure the water stays.
Okay. Thank you. And if we're willing to work with them, they're going to see that we're working in good faith to keep the water off for these residents and collect this money, and a judge would not say no to us.
This is somebody that's taking responsibility in the situation that we haven't had thus far.
Correct.
True.
And, and the bank, they're going to continue to pay, correct me if I'm wrong, this also says that they continue to pay bills that come due.
Correct.
So we're going to say current, which is good.
And I will state clearly on the record, from the moment that Ira was appointed, he did more cleanup work in the first three weeks that he was on this than Shapiro did their entire time, and I want that noted for everybody out there, that that's part of, one of the considerations to this, is when he says he's going to do something up, thus far, he's done it.
He's identified the water leaks and fixed the water leaks. They have had some more spring up that they're in the process of taking care of. What'd they say, three or four more?
There, there were twelve that they took care of from what I understand.
Recently, they had three, three or four new ones that just sprang up that they're in the process of trying to get fixed.
Correct.
And then, just to add that, once this was discussed of Ira taking over, since he's been, taking over the water bills since he's been in charge, he was in the next day and got things put in his name and got all the information to us and everything so that this could keep moving forward.
So he is actually.
He has been very responsive to things.
I'll go even one step further. In my field, communication's a big deal, and when Keith would reach out to Shapiro or something, it would be quite some time before we would hear back. Ira picks up the phone that day, right then and there, whether he's got an answer immediately, it's, I'll go get you the information that you need, what that is. That's where a lot of this is coming from, is there, there's been some demonstrations of commitment is the other reason why this is important.
That's a fresh change on this.
Sure. And I know I've had two different residents from trailers down there that have reached out to me that are obviously very concerned about having the water shut off, and they've both been in their trailers for years and years down there, and they're elderly and do not want to be forced with relocating, and so if we can keep the water on, you know,
And the one thing I would like to add that they had asked that I raised is that the residents feel comfortable paying the receiver, that they're not going to be forced out on this as long as he makes those payments, which I have every reason to believe that he will, the moment that he has court approval to do so, but you should feel comfortable being able to continue to pay your rent, and there shouldn't be any issues.
As long as we can do this without, I say, wiping out other four hundred and twenty thousand off the books, and I'm okay with it.
That was my biggest concern.
I think I agree that, or understand that point, and moving on to a different question, is there any limit to this agreement? If we keep the water on, and we have had a string of, you know, some negative experiences with receivers, and this receiver is being very responsive, which we're very pleased with, but this receiver is receiving money from either the bank or the rental payments to cover the cost of the water, will there be a limit to where the receiver will be able to pay the bills if they stop paying the bills at some point, or it's not profitable for them to pay the bills? Like, what would, what would, what would trigger, what would trigger an action on our side to reengage on this or vacate our agreement?
If you look at the resolution that I prepared, it says that he has to remain current on that. That's the reason we're not shutting it off. If in fact they fall behind, and ultimately, it's your guys' call. The court didn't say you can't do this. What I'm saying, what I would suggest is, in the event that they fail to pay, we engage in good faith, inquire, look at the receiver's reports, figure out what the problem is, and reassess at that point.
Sure. That, that's fair. I was just looking to define current and making sure that there was nothing behind this that we might be agreeing to inadvertently. One hundred percent, we want to balance protecting the residents that are there. We want to make sure that they're able to live healthy, safe lives and have their water kept on, but we also want to balance that against protecting our taxpayers as well.
My understanding of current is there would be no further delinquent bills going forward.
Stop the bleeding now. We just need you. But.
No. There's squatters there, Mayor. I mean, we have squatters there at that residence. I thought they, they had some squatters.
Yeah, there, there are, I believe, I don't know how many are still remaining, but I think there's still an issue with some squatters.
Do we have this account flagged to make sure that we're keeping up? Like, if we agree with this, having it.
Eye on it.
And then the council communication, if they get behind, are they, like, and what, is there any kind of leeway, you know, is it ten days, five days, whatever? I mean, current, but, you know, like.
Well, the process for shutting them off, we would have to do it, even if that were to get to that point, we have to do it in accordance with our policies for any other shut off, if that were to get to that point.
So we would, that's what I was wondering, if we have a special process for them being, not staying current, or is it like the same residents, you get that yellow, and then you get the red, and then you shut off?
So, it's changed a little bit. So, the bill, the bills go out the last business day of the month. They're due twenty days later. At that point, you get a penalty bill, which used to be yellow. They stopped carrying the yellow. Now it's white with a big red stripe. But it says penalty very clearly on it. So I don't know if, like, we, I think we would inform you guys, once it gets to that stage, then they have ten days to pay the penalty amount. If the penalty amount doesn't get paid, they get shut off the next day. That is how it works for all of the residents.
So would we do the same thing here with these guys as if they're resident and not have to go to council to approve shutting off the water?
You said yes, and if, if you say that's how you want this structured. Well, that's how this was written, was effectively the reason, it is a condition of them not being shut off that they remain current.
Yeah, and that's all I'm making sure, like, current is like any other resident in Kewaunee, they are considered current, and if they don't pay, they get the white with the red, and then they get shut off X amount of days later. And I want to make sure we follow the same protocol with them and not have to come to a council meeting to agree, are we going to shut them off and give them another two weeks of water and then go through all that? So as long as we, this says that we can do that, then that's all I want to make sure.
My rough math here, correct me, from about forty thousand dollars is what we're at risk. If they don't pay the next bill, if it's eighty thousand right now from January to roughly May, then that's forty thousand.
Ideally, it's going to be lower than. If they have leaks fixed. Right. So it gets significantly lower.
Is that what penalties to?
That is with, very minimal, because Ira hasn't had too many, and, and not all of the properties are on the same billing cycle. So the current cycle that they, that he has received bills for is one of them. That's the very high bill.
Okay.
So.
Can we get the properties on the same billing cycle so that way we're?
Yep.
The idea being, those bills should get better across time as those leaks are fixed.
But if we've got different billing cycles, and this one can go, and then, you know, it, it could, it would be nice to have, be able to just have everything in one.
But then, but then at that point, you, he's got to come up with X amount one time versus.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Colomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Hi.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
Councilmember Comnic.
Hi.
Mayor Moore.
Hi.
Moving on, Bill number two-five-dash-three-seven, resolution expressing the city's intent regarding tax increment financing for development by K-Town Real Estate LLC. This is in reference to the new car wash that is being constructed just off of Tenny Street. They have put a request in for help with the bill through, through the TIF. I have a motion.
No move.
Second.
And discussion? I've been reading through some of this, what exactly, how much are they asking for?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Because, I mean, there's a pretty substantial estimated cost.
They.
We got a representative up.
Yeah, if you want to.
Chris, how are you?
Good. Chris Roginsky, representing K-Town Real Estate LLC and the soon-to-be-open Deluxe Auto Wash. So the car wash itself is a substantial investment for a bunch of residents in Kewaunee. It's about a two million dollar construction cost, including the acquisition of the property. The property itself, we're taking from its existing property tax incremental value of nineteen hundred dollar property tax bill to what we estimate is close to thirty-six thousand dollars a year in property taxes. So with these improvements, we feel significantly that we're improving the business and the location right there in Kewaunee. It is similar to a wash that is in Princeton, Illinois right now. Ours will be a little bit different because we decided to go with equipment that'll allow us to, sorry, equipment that'll allow us to do trucks with ladder racks, nine-foot-ten clearance, duly trucks, trucks that are twenty-three foot long. So it'll enhance the amount of participants. It's a touchless car wash, membership-based, so there'll be two membership options. The one in Princeton currently has over five-hundred-and-thirty members, and over fifty percent of those members are from outside of Princeton. So we feel that with this and being even more of a market with larger trucks that will be bringing business and people to Kewaunee. So we're hoping.
Is this on a conveyor, like?
No, this is not a conveyor. You drive in. We're seeing that the tunnel washes with the conveyors are having issues with the brushes damaging vehicles, and also with the conveyors. If you don't operate them correctly, some people get damage to their tie rods, everything with the vehicle.
A lot more maintenance.
Lot more maintenance, for sure, yes. But this will be drive-in, touchless. If you get the baseline wash for eight dollars, you can be out of there in two minutes, thirty seconds. So it's a lot faster than what we currently have, and the best technology that has come out. So we just feel that our business will bring enhanced value and something else to come to Kewaunee for.
Is it against for the full cost?
Full cost of the project is one point nine million is what we're in for. We've already come out over a million on what we've spent to date.
The thirty-six thousand dollars in incremental tax that you talk about, is that estimated or is that somebody that has come and assessed the property, assessed the value of the car wash to say that you're?
We have an appraisal, so, yeah.
How long is that TIF good for, Gary? How many more?
Twenty thirty-eight? Yeah, through twenty thirty-eight, potentially twenty thirty-nine, um cause it's approximately twenty-three years on a TIF.
Chris, what would you say? I mean, that's one point nine. I know you like to capture as much funds as possible, but.
Yep.
Now, what are you looking to get out of this?
Well, uh if you look at the bottom of the first page, we're looking for um.
Bottom of page three.
Oh, page three, yep. Sorry, that was the values. Bottom of page three, the incentive request is loan forgivable over five years under typical TIF terms of fifty percent total increment. So two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. In addition, reimbursement of fifty percent of the annual net tax increment beginning in tax year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Up to a total cumulative amount of four forty-three, twenty-three and twenty-two cents. And yes, it's a big figure.
What did?
It won't be near as big as when the cannabis people come.
When uh what did we give uh? Arby's when they came in?
Four hundred and sixty. Four eighty.
Four eighty. Do we know, I don't have it right in front of me, Gary, what's the?
At a construction cost of three point eight million on the Arby's.
How much is left in the TIF? Do we know the balances?
See uh finance.
He's in back.
Uh Chris, how many members did you say that that I had in Princeton?
Princeton has over five hundred and thirty members currently.
Five thirty and you said half of those are?
Outside of Princeton, yep.
How much, how many members do you think we will have here in Kiwanee?
I would think we'd be pushing closer to eight hundred to a thousand.
You think we'd get the same ratio of half the members outside?
Very much so, yep.
What makes you think that?
Uh already getting input with uh my home office being in Galesburg. I know quite a few people in Knox County, Galva and on the way through there and they are very interested in coming. They have been through the tunnels in Galesburg. They do not like them. So they're looking for this to come our way.
So they would drive all the way here just to wash your car and drive back?
No, that's what I'm saying. They would drive here, wash their cars and end up going to other shops, to restaurants. And they would make a more meaningful visit if you're spending thirty-nine ninety-nine for a top-of-the-line membership to try and wash your car. Anywhere from thirty-one times a month to one time a month if you want, but you're not just driving to Kiwanee for that. You're doing more business in Kiwanee.
Right, and I I ask this because I'm a member of Club Car Wash. I work in Davenport.
Yep.
But if I go to Peoria, I got a club car wash there.
Yep.
I go to Davenport, I got one there, so I can use any of the club car washes. I paid forty bucks a month for mine.
Yep.
To wash my truck anytime I want, one time a day. So I asked this because we have one here and I wouldn't buy that car wash membership if I wasn't working in Davenport. I wouldn't drive to Davenport or Peoria to do that, but what makes yours, outside of the extra space? What makes it so special that you think that we would have somebody from Galesburg draw here and drive that? You know, to actually get the car washed. I mean, I understand, it's a big thing. Um I like my membership. I like washing my car, but just trying to understand the the logic behind. The cannabis I can see, the certain entities I could see, but you know, car washes, there's a dime a dozen everywhere else. You know, and so that's why I'm asking.
This technology is drastically different.
Technology, what's what's drastically different about it?
It gets your car a heck of a lot cleaner, goes with sensors, is a faster wash. Um like I said, it is brushless, so you don't have the damage to your vehicle that most people are experienced with the brush washes. But I can tell you that I get talked to by people all throughout that ask me when the car wash is open, when the car wash is open. So I can go by that.
Oh, the touchless car wash, it's just got the spray that like, and I mean, that's, I'm dumbing it down a little bit, but it doesn't have the brushes that hit it, right?
Yep, correct. No brushes. It's got the top mount spray and the two side sprays that'll go around it with sensors on it. So if you have a pickup truck, it'll sense going over the top and drop down to get lower. So it reads the actual characteristics and dimensions of the vehicle to make sure that it's getting closer.
Okay, I got you.
Do you trust the people that you're talking to will actually come here? Cause all due respect, talk can be cheap.
Yeah, I do. Um quite a few members for MSI that drive through here that do not have a way to wash the the service trucks currently. And my boss has already said he's buying memberships for the guys that come this way, so.
There's a lot of excitement around that. I'll I'll give you that. I know a lot of people have asked me about it as well.
Yeah, I can't go anywhere in town without getting at least asked twice about it, so.
I've been asked quite a bit about it too.
Yeah.
I mean, I I'm excited. I mean, I think it's a great asset for Kiwanee, but I have the challenge. I mean, the amount of money that we're asked to put up, I want to make sure that, you know, we're not extending our resources.
James ready?
Oh, James.
James ready?
What do you want to balance uh? Downtown, which one?
Downtown.
Nine hundred sixty-three, one sixty-six, seventy-six.
Look at two different figures here.
So they want an upfront two hundred and twenty.
And then the other one will be paid over the life.
That would be paid over for a total of four hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That's that's an estimate.
Estimate. They would get half the TIF going forward every year and then we would.
I would suggest on the estimate, I would not, I would rather see not going off the estimate but pay on what they're actually doing.
I I think I would interpret that as what the actual assessed value is and how much tax increment they generate. Not how much they estimate they'll generate.
So Chris, if you don't get the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, how does that affect your business today?
Affects drastically. I mean, it's not a make or break thing like you've seen. We've already.
Yeah, we've already broke ground. You've already got things going.
Oh yeah, we're about five to six weeks out.
Okay.
So it's loan terms, everything else.
I agree with you too, man. I'm sorry to disturb with the estimated.
I I would rather pay on the actual tax generated than the estimate.
But I think we can, we can accommodate them in both ways where we get a upfront amount and then the estimated, if he estimates it at this and it's less, then we kinda can work that down against the total amount of what the TIF life would be. So if it's estimated less, we don't, we take that away. Trying to think of the best way to explain this.
No, I know exactly what you're.
If the total TIF comes out to three hundred and sixty-five thousand and we gave him two hundred and twenty, we're gonna reduce the amount over that life of the next amount, the yearly amounts coming in, not half of thirty-six. You know what I'm saying? Cause then I'm sure you need the two hundred and twenty now, so you've asked for upfront to be able to help.
Yeah, to help eliminate some of the closing.
It's the backend money that would be affected by the overall amount. And so if you give them two twenty to help the local business, that's gonna generate.
The four hundred and forty thousand would be affected.
Correct, whatever, yeah.
And that's what I'm saying. I would rather pay on the actual generated increment than the estimated.
Right, so you're saying nothing upfront?
No, there's still that matter of that two hundred and twenty thousand.
This, at this point, I think it's important to point out that at this point, both halves are estimated.
Yes.
Right, but.
No, no, but I think we're speaking the same language here, but different. Like I'm saying, if they, if he's asked for two hundred and twenty now, that estimated four forty is not what we're gonna pay out over the time. We're gonna actually pay. It will get the total amount of what this TIF is gonna generate and then we can multiply it times the years and then reduce the amount. It wouldn't be half of the TIF dollars that we would give to get to four forty. It would be that amount adjusted against the initial amount that we gave. Does that make sense? No, you guys all? Gary, does that make sense? Both Garry's?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
You understand what you're saying.
Are you saying, are you saying that?
Or it doesn't make sense?
Are you saying that to show tax increment?
I would like to hear the city manager's advice on that, on this.
I I think that if to the extent that this is uh valued higher than it'll generate, you, you're gonna put the two hundred and twenty thousand out now. That that could be all of what it generates. And typically in TIF, some of what's generated by it is retained for public improvements. Uh and other, you know, things that happen within the TIF district. Um it's, you don't typically give away one hundred percent, but but you do. It's sometimes you've given away more than something generates when it has eligible projects.
We lost Cohen, substantial amount of money, and we have yet to see any, anything for it.
At least with our project, you see we're already building.
Yeah, and similarly, when you gave it to Cohen, it was, it was built.
Yes.
And we had a good idea.
Good idea.
And and then he took what he got and has used that for the planning, the architects, the additional work that hasn't borne fruit yet, but uh it um.
We did, we, he left money on the.
He has, he has um he has some commitments in place that uh should they come to fruition will be very good uh for the community.
I will say in our entire packet that I turned into Gary, it has all the quotes.
It has quotes from everybody, so they are legitimate quotes. It's not.
It's not a made up number. It's real quotes, real contracts. And as I said, we've already paid well over a million dollars on this project already, so.
I I will say that there's a lot of what's in here as TIF eligible is not in fact TIF eligible.
Cause again, Gary's hard.
A lot of, a lot of what is shown on page three and the estimated TIF eligible project costs are not actually eligible project costs.
Which ones?
TIF doesn't pay for any new vertical construction. And or the the equipment that goes in it. I mean, I think that's a barely sizable piece of of what's here. But the land acquisition, site preparation, demolition, uh planning and engineering, those are all TIF eligible costs. So you, you shouldn't get hung up on the one point nine five, one point nine eight five as TIF eligible. Those are not eligible. It's not, there's not one point nine million worth of TIF eligible. But there is uh more than what he has asked for initially in the uh in the, for the upfront for the forgivable loan piece.
My biggest concern is that over the life of this TIF, you know, giving this money out, are we gonna generate enough through that TIF that the TIF is gonna continue to grow or is it just gonna stagnate because we're giving out so much? That that's my concern.
I mean, but also on the contrary, we, we're not Scrooge McDuck and can sit on this money. The money is there for a reason, to help stimulate businesses. Now, I get it, we don't want millions of dollars sitting in an account in case, that, or we want some money in there in case somebody comes to us. But we also can't sit on a hoard of money on the what ifs and 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 things like that too. So I I can see it from both sides, but I mean, this is exactly what this is designed for.
Expecting future investments.
I would suggest that if ju- just, you know, in apples to apples, if this is one point nine and the construction cost on the other was three point eight and we gave four hundred and eighty, you could expect this to generate about two hundred and forty once it actually gets assessed in total increment. But we have no control over the assessment process.
Come in and.
And and the truth be told, nobody wants their assessment to be high. It it's great for TIF, but you'd rather just have it low and not not have to pay the money to get it back.
Yeah.
That's.
How are we coming to that number on, you you're, you're using Arby's as a comparison? Is that?
I brought that up just what.
Yeah.
The Cohen?
Paid them.
What, but uh that Midland Plaza property is assessed as one large property. So how do we ever really know?
The the very, the same way that, the same way that this was, um.
There wasn't any other factors? I just. I just, I just wondered, there wasn't any other parallel investments or changes to that property? Okay.
No, cause we're, we're looking at the, you know, what happened after that Arby's was built that went, you know, that's, that's how much it was.
Was it thirty-six thousand? I think the part of that was like a thousand.
Yeah, I I think the total amount was thirty-eight, thirty-four, thirty-eight, somewhere in that, a thousand per year. And it had more years too. That's another consideration.
He left a lot of money on the table to be able to get that money upfront.
We actually capped it and said it's gonna be at this level and, you know, we're not given the approximately twenty-three years. We're saying twenty-three and we're, we're not showing any increase in in value uh or or tax rates over time. We, we went as conservative as we could um on, on that, cause he did have a higher number.
I remember that. So you're, you're basically looking at both properties and saying that if that was three point eight, this is one point nine.
Just simple, just simple math.
Four, four and two. This is gonna generate about two forty in TIF.
It, if the, if everything stays consistent, but that one had like, it's had a few more years, so there's some variables. The tax rate may be higher now than it was then, different things like that. I'm not. And and a lot of it goes back to what do you use as a base? You know, the base for these properties was established in two thousand and fifteen when the TIF was adopted. We like to treat it like it's a clean slate and it's worth not much. So that all the new stuff beca- is added on to a base of almost zero. But in actuality, there was a bowling alley on that property and some other things, so it had some.
I think at the end of its life, it was seventy-nine hundred dollars in property taxes.
It was a very low base.
And then forty-five hundred and then nineteen hundred the last two years. So if you're looking at approximately anywhere from thirty-three to thirty-eight thousand dollars in property taxes, that's a significant improvement to that property.
It is.
And when you bought it, it was just raw ground, so it would have had a relatively low uh base.
Wasn't necessarily raw, cause we spent a lot of money demoing all of that stuff.
But there was no bowling alley.
For tax purposes, it was.
Yes, I'm not saying there wasn't a cost. But those, those, the costs are, like I said earlier, those are, um, those are TIF eligible, the demo and the site prep and and cleaning and all that. Those are.
Also curious to know, I mean, we got basically a million dollars, let's just call it a million. I don't wanna say nine hundred sixty-three thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars every time. We got a million dollars in the account right now. How much revenue comes in and when does it come in? Cause that's not gonna stay a million. We're gonna give some away, but we're also gonna get recouped. When does that come in and how much of that annually do we get?
If I had a TIF report with me, I could tell you that. I can tell you about.
Oh, there you are, James. You're hiding in back.
What, they come in with the property tax?
That's what I was, I figured it was, but I didn't know. It was special. I can play some. Last August or September, what, how much did we get?
So they come in three increments, uh June.
They come in in three increments, uh, June, Sep- September. Uh-huh, somebody guessed me. All right, property taxes, forty-four eighty-four D, no, forty-four eighty-four, we're talking E. For downtown. Five-one twenty-two fourth and four-thirty twenty-twenty-five. We collected four hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars in property tax receipts from TIF.
So we bring in half a million dollars annually into that downtown TIF?
That's what we collected last year. The year before that was... Three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So it's gone up.
Yeah, that's a substantial amount. I mean, roughly about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars has gone up. And it's only gonna continue to go, I mean, so if we, I mean, I'm not saying we give away the farm here, but I mean, we bring in a half million dollars in revenue annually to recoup that amount.
That's my concern, I just don't...
Yeah, I know, I don't wanna deplete the funds either. But I also don't want, I mean, if Gary, if your math is mathing, then, you know, four million versus two million, we're looking at about two forty that we're gonna bring in in TIF money. I mean, it, it, again, I don't know. It's tough for me to assess the property and do any of that.
Right.
What are you guys saying? Sorry, I talked a lot.
Suggestions, opinions? Good mind.
Well, we've covered so much ground already.
Well, I mean, we gotta figure out a amount, so we don't, we gotta figure out a amount to give, and then how we're gonna do the rest of it. Cause they're, they're asking for initially two hundred and twenty, and then twenty, fifty percent of that, uh, over the life of the TIF to get the other two hundred and twenty.
I think we're all, we don't have a problem with two twenty, I think, dude.
Per Gary, the, the two forty is basically what he estimates that it'll generate over the life of the TIF. So if we get two twenty, there, we're not leaving much on the table. If it doesn't even generate that.
About half. Or no, you know, if we're all reading that.
Is, this is, this is the part where it's literally, it's totally up to you. You can, you can figure this however you would, would like.
Shout out to number there it is.
Adam, what do you think, you know?
I have to abstain from this.
It's been a long time since that piece of property's been productive. Been many, many years.
Would it be something if we did the upfront on the five-year forgivable loan and revisited after five years?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, at the end of the day, we, we're put up here to help businesses. That's my whole thing. I want businesses coming to Kiwanee, I want businesses to thrive. And this money's sitting there. We get half a million dollars in revenue annually that we collect from TIF tax money. That's gonna replenish some of those funds come June and September. So it's not like we're depleting all the funds in this account. Um, we're obviously gonna have other people come and hit us up for TIF dollars. We've got more on the agenda today. But, um, I think doing the half upfront, like you said, and then we can revisit that. I mean, I'm okay with that.
I, I would be okay with that.
I mean, that's gonna help you, it's gonna help...
If it helps the council move forward on this, so we don't have to, you know, just keep rehashing it and we can keep productive business going, that...
That's, that's all I want. I mean, I wanna see those eight hundred memberships, I wanna see those fleet of vehicles come through. I wanna see them in Kiwanee, I wanna see them, I mean, we don't have, and I said this and I'll stand by it, we don't have another boiler shop coming in, we don't have another foundry coming in. So how do we generate tax revenue here? It's through tourism. And tourism's a, a broader term, and that's tourism right there. It's bringing people from outside communities who come to this community to buy our gas, to buy our groceries at Walmart, to do all that. And this is gonna be a way to generate that if, if, if it does have what you say it's gonna do.
Yeah, I agree. That's, uh, Kiwanee's selling point right now is tourism. And, you know, you're not coming to Kiwanee outside of a few places for one significant visit.
Correct. Hundred percent. And I think we've got some outlying communities, smaller communities, that would benefit from it here to drop their kids off to travel sports and whatnot. So, I mean, I think it's a, a benefit, it's a win. I'm excited for it. I know the community is, so. Helps you, helps to stimulate the economy.
We can look at it for five years and reevaluate it.
It, it clearly, I will say, it clearly has at least that much in eligible costs.
Yeah.
And the risk that it won't generate that, there is risk that it won't generate that. Um, but it's not significant.
Right. Hundred percent. But I've seen these car washes.
I, I...
Not in general, but I've seen them and what they...
I, I appreciate, you know, that suggestion. I, I like the idea, you know, you know, come back and revisit it.
If it gets us off, off base of discussion, I'd...
Yeah.
All for that, so.
Hundred percent. I like it.
I'm nervous enough standing up here.
Hey, you don't show it, you're doing well. Can we get Stephanie up here to talk? Okay.
So, um...
Wanna make the, we have to make a motion on that?
Well, there's a motion, but what you have to do is, um, tell me. No, because it's, the, the bottom line on this is, uh, you have to tell me because it says the terms of which are fixed here, too. So you're... I've got, we're gonna write it out now, you're gonna tell us. So you have literally a blank canvas, you figure out what you want it to be, and then that's what goes in. That's what you're directing me to have our TIF attorney put together for an ordinance for you guys to adopt.
Oh, I think Bob Ross is the best way we can to paint this canvas. And basically, it's the five, two hundred and twenty over five years for the loan, and then reassess it after five years?
Yeah.
Chris, yeah? Is that enough?
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with that, so. Sorry.
You're good.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Chris.
It's a move.
Have that, so, uh, now we, uh, vote?
Councilmember Sernovich. Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
How's that one? I'm down. Thanks, Chris.
Item G, Bill number two-five-dash-three-eight, ordinance amending section nine-four-point-two-six, possession, sale, or use of fireworks established in the City of Kiwanee Code of Ordinance. This is requested at our last council meeting during public participation. Colin Riley, co-owner of fireworks vendor doing business in Kiwanee, requested additional days to operate his business beyond what is currently allowed by ordinance. Because July fourth falls on a Friday this year, Mr. Riley requested to have sales extended for one additional day. Proposed ordinance change would allow for that additional day of sales. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And discussion.
I just wanted to point out, this year it's one extra day, um, per our discussion last meeting. Um, it, the way it was already worded was two weeks before the fourth, and the change in the ordinance will allow sales through the following Saturday. So even if the fourth is on a Monday, they can still sell through the following Saturday.
I was thinking about that, and I don't know if I would be comfortable if, if the fourth was on a Sunday and we had six additional days of sales, to the following Saturday. I, I think I would rather see something along the lines of going forward, you know, in the situation at the council's discretion.
Yeah.
Rather than a set...
Send a blanket.
Blank, yes, exactly.
What, what if you just said the following Saturday or two days following the fourth, whichever is less?
It can be worded as such, whatever you choose.
Then he gets his one day.
The most he'd ever do is two days past, yeah. I, I could live with that, I just, I say, just the idea of, you know, the, that full week, you know, just didn't sit real well with me.
I have no preference.
Yeah, either way, you know, with the, with the discretion or just, you know, the two days, that, that's fine.
Trying to strike a balance, I mean, six days, two days? In what he was asking for?
Right. Yeah.
So we would need a motion to amend to whatever you want.
But for some...
Make a motion to amend the, uh, resolution to be the following Saturday or two days following the fourth, whichever is less. Fewer, whichever is fewer days.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so on the motion to amend, Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Other discussion on that?
Pardon me?
Question, and then you can approve it.
So, on the original motion, is there any other discussion?
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Moving on, item H, Bill number two-five-dash-three-nine, ordinance granting a request for variance to Saint John Paul the Second Parish at four-ten West Central Boulevard. Saint John Paul the Second Parish located at four-ten West Central Boulevard has requested a variance to the city's ordinance on allowable signs. Right now, the church owns and operates a lighted, a lighted stagnant, static sign. They would like to install a sign capable of changing colors, messages, and designs. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Session.
Looking at the, uh, zoning board, I mean, they didn't have too many things that...
There were two people there that were, had some concerns, but, uh, I sat in on that meeting, and they seemed to be satisfied that they could adjust the brightness of the sign or even make it, uh, static after a certain hour. So they, they, they went away, you know, had their concerns, you know, answered, and I think moving forward, you know, they, they, they were satisfied with, uh, what was put out.
I went and spoke to, uh, Dana Masson today, and I don't know that she was completely satisfied. Um, I also drove around today looking at these signs, similar signs. They're quite prevalent. Um, as technology shifts, I would like to recommend we look at our, uh, codes and try and move away from requiring these types of variances. Um, most of these flashing signs or LED signs are oriented perpendicular to the road, so traffic in an oncoming fashion sees the sign. Rather than having the sign oriented parallel to a road where it's pointed directly across the street at the residential areas that we are speaking about violating our codes, um, and requiring the ordinance. So I would like to either amend this here or offer to amend this here or send it back to the Zoning Board of Appeals to recommend that they require or amend our codes to require these signs be oriented perpendicular to the roads for traffic to see them rather than, you know, facing residential areas.
How's that, how's that work, Keith?
Uh, what is...
So how's that work in a, how's that work for, if you want to amend it, the ordinance with the zoning or three years?
Right, so then we adopt it.
I mean, the, the variance process can, 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 it, it can change it. I mean, so the, the zoning board makes the recommendation to you folks, and then you folks can in turn put it back to the zoning board for...
Or we can amend the variance here.
Actually, I think...
They can make stipulation that says it has to be this way instead of this way.
Right. So what the variance requested is to replace it, or to replace the sign in an R four two-family dwelling district. What does our ordinance say on the LED signs that we put in?
They're not allowed, they, it, it, it's not allowed to just permit, you know, if, if, if a, like Zion Lutheran Church, they are also in a residential district, and they want to put the LED sign in. Well, the, the ordinance states that you cannot have a flashing type sign in a residential district. But that's what the variance process is there for. So if someone wants to do something that's not in the code now, that's not allowed by code, you can ask for a variance for it. It's real similar to like, uh, if someone wants to build too close to a property line. Okay?
No, no, I know.
The code says I can't, I can't allow it, but...
What I was getting at was, what is our, um, uh, what does our LED code say against perpendicular versus parallel to the street?
Doesn't.
We have, it doesn't. So the variance is just to put it in there not to have it perp, like, not to go from perpendicular to parallel, because it's not written in our code that we have to have it perpendicular to the road, right?
Right, right. Because there are, there are signs, you know, that are mounted flat on a, a business fringe. It's, it is parallel to the street. In certain situations, that works. But as...
I think with the, with the church, they were wanting to use the foundation that is currently there, and they did not wanna have to demo that and then pour a new pad and electricity and such to, uh, you know, change the direction of the sign. They wanted to keep it, you know, in relationship to the current foundation.
I, I'm concerned that a stipulation that requires action of a resident to file a complaint in order to create a follow-on solution is not really a viable solution at all. Um, we need to find a way to either, either approve it or not. And the way the, the way it's written, uh, the stipulation that should the city receive a complaint concerning the sign brightness, flashing, or other concerns over the sign functionality, that the applicant will act appropriately to resolve the complaint. If the complaint is not resolved, then the case may be brought back for revocation of the variance. I just feel like this creates a potential future problem. Whereas in the zoning board's notes, they referenced Zion Lutheran's sign, and there has been no complaint. Well, Zion Lutheran's sign is perpendicular to the road and does not show directly towards any one person's residence. So I don't really accept that as a complete, um, comparable. And so in this instance, I think that the church could, uh, pour, they have an opportunity right now. The sign is in disrepair, and they could correct it completely right now. And the resident that I spoke to today and went and visited with her would be most, um, appeased and made whole if it were perpendicular to the road. So that's my recommendation.
The, the only question I ask is that house that sits on, right adjacent to it, now you're facing that house, and so you're, you're doing the same thing to that house on the side of it.
To the east.
To the east.
Yeah.
That, that you are to the house across the street.
It is further down the road.
It's a much farther distance because the sign is actually in between the, uh, church and the, um, and office building. Uh, and then you have to cross the street, whereas as it stands right now, it's literally a sidewalk street, sidewalk.
Uh, I mean, you're not gonna appease, you know, you're not gonna appease anybody in this situation cause if it's flashing either way, somebody is gonna be upset because unlike the, the Zion Lutheran, there is a lot of land and real estate there from north and south of that sign.
Correct. There is no other standalone LED sign that I found that was installed parallel to the road. I maybe could have missed one, but Lyle, Irving, uh, Zion, um... Where else did I go? Oh, there is, there, um...
At the end of Central, I think it had, all the way down Central, the, where it's a T.
Where's this one? Oh, you're speaking about, uh, Saint Peter Grove?
Yeah, I think so.
But then that faces Irving?
Cause it, cause it sits at a corner.
Kind of, kind of faces Central. I mean, there's, right, like this?
Not a, not a residence. Not a, not a residence.
Right, but it's parallel.
I mean, the, the, the one thing they said is that this design can be programmed to be programmable to dim.
It could also be installed.
Church that is requesting this, it would be here to tear up the current foundation and reconstruct that, or they've offered to, after a certain time of night, just turn it to a static sign as it is now, so that it wouldn't interfere with the neighbors.
The other question I have is what additional costs would they have, because they're going from a one-sided sign to a two-sided, kinda like we did, where you have to have two, and it, it was, so there's gonna be additional expense, not only in the foundation, but now they have to add another side, because you can't have one side facing the side of the road with no illumination, because they're not illuminated the back of the side, sitting parallel to the road, so what additional expenses are gonna be incurred there? Do you know how much our sign was?
I, I, that, that is not, that is not relevant in my line of thinking, because it's not allowed in the residential area, so we are trying to minimize the impact to the residential area, not necessarily the cost of the person asking for the variance.
I don't think anybody is disagreeing with you, Adam, but you were trying to make it so that the church is not taking on any additional expense that they are not ready to take on. I would like to, if, maybe table this at this time, and maybe have a conversation with the church to see if that is something doable for them, if it's something, it's an expense that they are capable of taking on at this time. I, I would hate to put it on their shoulders without even giving them an option to, to say, yeah, we could do that, or no, you know, we just don't have the extra funds for that.
Okay.
Could, would you be able to reach out to them?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, if that's something that they would be willing to do, or...
Sure.
Oh, that's, come on up. Can you come up, please?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
My name is George Gazardo, I've been, I live at two thirty-five South Chestnut Street. I've been in Kiwanee for eighty, over eighty years, and I'm on the Building and Grounds Committee of the Church, and I am happy that you are going to consider having a new ordinance. I think it's wrong to, every time you have a sign, to have a zoning variance, I think, I agree with Cernovich, and I think you need to do something. As a member of the church, parish, before we did, first thing was, it was, needed to be repaired, so we said, oh, if we're gonna repair it, why don't we consider an LED sign? And so, well, before we did that, we wanted to check with the zoning to see how could we could bid the job, so we're just on the ground floor, we had no idea what we were doing, so it was good that we got a chance to speak to the zoning people, and they said, well, we have similar situations in the past, we'll handle it that way, but I agree, and I would be unsure for the parish, we would be willing to wait until it's ironed out, until you have a new policy.
With the added expense of making that sign perpendicular to the road, is that something that you guys would be capable of? That would be the big question that I would have.
That, that, that is an issue, it's, it's like, that you have to, have to two signs, instead of one sign, it's two.
It's gonna increase the cost, definitely.
And then, well, what if we put the sign on a diagonal, on the corner, where we had a statue of, of Saint Francis, of Assisi, you know, would, would be, that would be acceptable, what about the other corner on a diagonal, as opposed to flat, you know, perpendicular, or, or, or parallel, what about a diagonal? So if we had some guidelines, it would be helpful to us, so we could see if we have the money and see if we want to do it. We're willing to wait until we get together to meet the minds.
I appreciate your input, thank you very much, George.
Uh, George, real quick, the, the problem we'll still have is that this is a, going into residential, so the variance is not about the placement of sign, in our code today, it doesn't say perpendicular, parallel, and we can change that to that ordinance and whatnot, you're still gonna have to go in front of the variance board, because you're in a residential district, and so you would still have to go through the variance in a residential district if you were to put the sign in, no matter what, whether, whether you go perpendicular, parallel, diagonal, it doesn't matter, it's because of where the church is today.
Okay, I did not understand that.
Yes.
Okay.
So...
We would be certainly willing to do that.
Yeah, so what I would say, the next thing, George, is if you guys could find out the cost of putting it per, per, perpendicular to the road, two sides, new foundation, new everything, what the cost would be for a one-sided, and that, that would be, if we could get, if that's doable for the church or whatnot, I mean, that's where...
How about a diagonal?
Or diagonal, what, you'd still have two sides on the diagonal, it doesn't matter.
So we would bring that information to the zoning board, and then they would let us know if it would be...
I think we would table, I mean, you've already got the approval to the zoning board, they would table it, we'd table it, and you would just come back to us with that and figure out what, what's feasible for the church and parish to do.
And I think if we send it back to the zoning board, like, my thought was orientation, but if they could provide some sort of standard, like, to say it's not just not allowed, because this is happening, but say, it should, it needs to be oriented in a fashion that minimizes its distance to residences, I don't know, something.
I think that's the point that we would...
Yeah, we don't need to go to the board, the zoning board for that, you know, that's something, you know, we could, we could request, you know, here.
What do we do next? We get bids?
Yes.
And then what do we do with those bids? Come to you?
We're gonna table this, and you come to us and bring that, and then come to Gary, and then you can put it, and then you can put it back.
First, you, you get the bids, and then you figure out whether or not you can still do the project, yeah.
Then we come back to you, and then you advise us?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Keith, if they're changing anything from their original plans, does that have to go back before the board?
So, my, my, my inclination is yes, because if I mail postcards out to people telling them what was happening, and now we're gonna change it. So I think it needs to be re-notified to everybody, so that if it does happen to affect somebody else, they have the opportunity to say...
Here's a question, if they realize they don't have the funds to do it perpendicular, and they have it to do parallel, and just basically the same way that they were gonna do it, and they're like, okay, we can do this, or nothing, that doesn't have to go, because that's what the board approved, so he can come back to us, but if he's gonna change orientations, the placement, the, any of that stuff, then that would have to go back to the zoning board.
If they're gonna change it from a single-sided sign to a double-sided sign, I would say that's a significant enough change that it needs to be.
But if they don't, and they don't have the means to do it, then we can approve that or deny it based on what they're going to, what they have capability to do, so, okay. Do you have a motion to table this?
No, we need to...
We have a motion, we have a motion.
I'll resend your motion. Who made this, second or first?
Colomer Baker.
Uh, I'll resend my motion.
And now...
Motion to table, make a motion to table this. Table. I'll second it.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Bill number two five dash four zero, resolution expressing the city's intent regarding tax increment financing for development by the Flemish Club. There's, I have a, a motion, some moved.
Second, sorry.
Sorry, who was that second?
Me.
Thank you.
There's a lot to consider here as well, is, um... Sorry, is, um, the Flemish, if I'm correct, is...
Not-for-profit?
Exactly, so... It's a whole different set of circumstances, we really...
So what are they, I, I... Yeah, no, I get that, but do we have a packet on it, or like, what they're asking?
I, I didn't actually provide it, um, essentially what this one boils down to is you give typically the same, uh, the same thing, they wanted to be treated like anybody else, but they're not-for-profit, so do you buy tax increment financing to people who don't pay taxes? One hundred percent of the increment on that is zero.
So what are they asking for, how much and what?
I, I think just whatever you would give, but twenty-five is, again, you always fall back, if, on a roof, you'd do twenty-five, you've not done anything more, if you wanted to change that precedent and start asking for more, you could, but...
But it doesn't provide any, oh, oh...
It will generate no increment, and if it did, they don't pay taxes anyway, so it wouldn't anyways.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's a double, it's a double, no, this won't give anything in increment, but most of the roofs that you've put twenty-five thousand dollars towards will not pay for, will not generate any increment either.
Project alone, but the business still is.
But that, but they have wedding receptions and quinceañeras, and Flemish Club is a big part of the community, so do you wanna help them with tax increment financing funds or not? Is, I mean, that's, that's basically all it boils down to, isn't it?
Do we have a statement of need? Do we have any idea what the quotes are? Do we have anything at all to look at, you know, how many jobs we're talking about? What the sales tax revenue is? I mean, we're talking about a lot of plausibles, but nothing, nothing, nothing concrete, or, or even estimated.
There is very little concrete on, on, from that aspect.
I, I, I would like to at least set the standard at showing a request with some estimates of value proposition.
Just, there's not enough, in my opinion, to make a decision.
This is, this, I mean, this is basically just to see, do you even want to consider not-for-profits? We've had other not-for-profits, Hill Church asked before, and was told, no, we're not doing it for not-for-profits, House of Prayer was told, we're not doing not-for-profits. If it's, are you doing not-for-profits? If you're not doing not-for-profits, I mean, then it's just a cut and dry, we're not gonna do not-for-profits.
I mean, those are different scenarios, because they're places of worship that don't, I mean, yes, they, they do bring people in and whatnot, to worship on Sunday, this, this could be arguably a little bit more tourism dollars coming in, but we set the precedent, not-for-profit, to not give them, we open that floodgate to a not-for-profit, then we're gonna have every not-for-profit banging down our door, saying, well, why them and not me? We bring people in on that, we do this, we do that, so...
But we've also established the case-by-case scenario, too.
Yeah, and that's the other thing I was gonna say, so it's like six or half a dozen in here, you know?
But if you wanna table it, we could talk over the next two weeks, and we can...
I would like to see, like, Adam here, I'd like to see a little bit, something from it, I mean, right now, I've got nothing, and I don't know. Yeah.
I, I think tabling is a good idea at this point, um, send our motions.
I've been, I've sent a motion. I have a second? Oh, geez.
I don't know, I, I could have...
It was Mike and then...
I will resend whatever I had.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I'll resend whatever I had, dude.
And I will vote on the table.
Boy, I need to make a motion to table it.
Motion to table.
I make a motion to table it, second.
Councilmember Colomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Bill number two five dash four one, resolution expressing the city's intent regarding tax increment financing for development by Van de Velde Wellness Center. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
End discussion. This also brings up some unique issues, we just gave tiff to this, how many years, how long ago was it?
Three.
Two years.
Two? I personally would like to see, you know, something where, for the same structure, limited, you know, how long, how many, how quick you can come back for more.
Uh, I mean, yeah, but haven't we done for others? I think we did, Gus has said for the roofing, for something else, the theaters, we did for a couple, we did a couple tiffs, so, I mean, we can't, if we've done it for others, we can't just set a precedent now and say that we don't, you know?
I would, yeah, maybe not at this particular moment, but I think when we get through this one moving forward, I think, that's my opinion, I just don't think they should be able to come back, you know, every few years, you know, pretty time before they can come back and continue to ask.
I think we can look at that, I mean, I, I, I wanna see a case-by-case, because if there's a business in town that's willing to expand and, and do things, and bring in more revenue and more tax dollars and stuff, I mean, Chad's building looks beautiful since you've done all the work on to it, and I think expanding your business and stuff, so I think case-by-case, but, I mean, I agree with you in some aspect of it, but what he's doing in the additions here...
Chad, could you explain, oh, what, like, what you're doing?
Yeah, so...
Are you adding an addition, or just renovating something inside?
So, yeah, I'm Chad Van de Velde with Van de Velde Wellness Center, I was here two years ago, three years ago, we redid the parking lot and the exterior, and, you know, I think, so right now, in twenty twenty-two, we brought hyperbaric oxygen therapy to our office and to our practice, we just had one chamber, with each chamber, it requires two pieces of equipment to run the chamber, these treatments are an hour long or more, sixty to ninety minutes long, so if you're running a piece, these two pieces of equipment for this length of time, then they produce heat, with one chamber and one hyperbaric room, we were able to, to negate that heat to keep the, the patient comfortable by placing them, you know, kinda away from the chamber and, and outside of that therapy room to keep them comfortable in the summer, so, like I said, twenty twenty-two is when we first brought hyperbaric oxygen therapy to our office, between the results and, and the demand, we got a second hyperbaric oxygen chamber in September of last year, and we got our third one in Fe- February of this year, so we have two chambers that are laying down, that the patient lays down in, and our third chamber is actually a sit-up one, because many of the patients that we see have neurological conditions or, or other physical ailments or limitations that prevent them from being able to get in and out of the lay-down chamber, and that would prevent them from getting this type of therapy. This therapy, this therapy is cutting-edge, this therapy is, it's not holistic therapy, it's not an alternative therapy, this therapy's been widely used in hospital settings and wound centers, so, so this is backed by science and physiology, many different condition, many conditions that you may have heard that they've used this for, therapies for, is wounds that won't heal, intracranial abscess, so infection of the brain, that, that's, antibiotics don't work, and, and it's too delicate to do surgery, osteomyelitis, so infection of the bone, so, so they save this therapy for, and gangrene's another one, so they've saving this therapy for when patients are about ready to lose a life or a limb, and they'll throw them in this chamber, and, and they get results, so this is a really, really cool therapy, in, in this time that we've had this therapy, we've had neurological, neurologists from the Illinois Neurological Institute, from Peoria to refer patients, we've had oncologists from Gales, Galesburg, refer patients to this, to our office for this therapy, we've had general physicians refer patients to this, to this office for this therapy, last June, if you guys were able to attend, there was something called Dimension, Dementia Action Plan, which there was three keynote speakers, two of them are medical doctors, and then they asked me... And then they asked me to, to be partake in that speak, speech or that, that, that platform and specific to hyperbaric oxygen therapy. So we're seeing a lot of patients, the type of patients we're seeing are neurological patients, autoimmune patients, so dementia, um, MS, Parkinson's. Post-stroke recovery, concussions, autoimmune conditions, and, and we're getting results and, and so we're bringing a wide, um, this therapy at this time. Um, is well researched and well studied, but there's not a lot of these clinics or offices in this area that have this, even in Peoria and Quad Cities, very, very limited. So I feel like this community is very, very fortunate to have access to this type of therapy for, um, not just this community, but the rural community surrounding it. So, you know, if it doesn't, you know, I think something too, you know, this is the definition of growth and development, right? You know, this is what TIF is, growth and development, and this is what we just did is, is we developed a hyperbaric practice within our practice through growth and, and through results. Um, I know I was here two or three years ago, but, uh, you know, that was entirely different. That was all for exterior and nothing, uh, regarding really much in the interior, uh, as far as anything on this matter. It was, had nothing to do, that, that really was touching this matter of, of what we're talking about now, so. Yeah, so, so I guess one hit, yeah, so it's, it's pretty cool. I, I encourage you guys to, you know, Google it, H-Bot and pick any condition. It's, it's wild, man, it's, 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 go ahead.
How long has this therapy been around?
So this therapy's been around for two-hundred or three-hundred years, used in a hospital, in a hospital setting. Um, they have them widely used in wound centers, so wound centers are where you mostly find them.
So it's not going away?
It's not going away, so, um, um, they're in hospital settings, like I said, gangrene, there's fourteen different conditions that, that insurance will okay it for. Um, unfortunately, most of the time you, like, if you have a wound that won't heal, um, you have to go through option A through Z before insurance will okay it, right? So you'll have to have skin grafts, antibiotics, and all of those else, those have to fail before insurance will okay you to, to follow through with, uh, um, this type of therapy in, in, in a hospital setting.
When did you add your first chamber?
So first chamber was in twenty-twenty-two, so I flew to New Jersey in April of twenty-twenty-two to get.
So in three years, you quadrupled it.
Yeah, so three years, we quadrupled it.
Tripled it, I mean.
Yeah, yep, and, and, uh, you know, we feel like we're scratching the surface and, and we're just, we're just growing and, and touching on it.
I can only imagine the therapy that you've invested in is quite extensive as far as cost to you to bring it into your office.
Yeah, so, so obviously the things that you're looking at doesn't include any of the equipment that, that I have purchased, right? So, so we're, we're, this is all just, um, things that we've had to do to our office to ensure that we can keep, continue to grow this and continue to touch patients. Not only in our community, but, but like I said, a sixty-mile radius. In, in sense, I filled out that application. So my building is forty years old, um, we installed three, so we have three hyperbaric rooms. Each hyperbaric room is now temperature-controlled, um, with mini-split, so each, each room has its own temperature control and its mini-splits. Um, we have a hundred amp, uh, circuit breaker, um, that circuit breaker's forty years old. My electrician contractor told me it could handle all this stuff. So last week, uh, we had the air conditioners on and then the hyperbaric chambers running, um, and then we had the office air conditioner on also. And, and the circuit breaker could not handle it, and I think it's, it's probably sufficient, but it's just forty years old and has never seen this much juice coming towards it. So, so there's also, actually going to be another expense that I'd like to tack on, onto that, uh, application from the electrician bill that's coming next Tuesday, not this Tuesday, next Tuesday, so. Um, I, I don't know if that's, you know, if we could make an amendment or if I have to do this all over again, but, but, you know. But it's exciting, man, it's super exciting. We had another patient who, who saw her neurologist last week, and there was a group of four neurologists who actually had, um, kind of similar what we had done with Dr. Ahern and another with the dementia action plan last week, or last Ju- last June. Um, they had their own dementia action plan, and it was for neurologists, and, and hyperbaric oxygen therapy was at their center of their, their talk regarding, uh, um, you know, potential treatments in reverse and, uh, and, and helping patients with these types of, uh, conditions.
I, I'm glad you're here to explain this because I have to admit, you know, I had some concerns on this with, you know, you just having been here three years ago. And hearing this, you know, you definitely have convinced me, you know, and I, I have to agree with, with Chris on this one, you know, we need to continue with our case-by-case. You're, rather than just a, a set number of years, I, I think that was the wrong thought process on mine, so I'm, I'm glad you're here to clear this up for me, thank you. We could always, again, table this if you have some electrical work that needs to be done that you would like to. Can you reapply with the electrical work in, included in there?
Say so.
Well, I mean, we could look at it, I'm not guaranteeing, but, but we could always look at, we could table this motion tonight rather than you having to start from scratch.
If you're willing to have to entertain more than the sixteen thousand.
Mayor, do you roughly know what it's going to be, Chad?
Uh, the, the electrician said thirty-five to five.
Thirty-five thousand?
Thirty-five hundred dollars to five thousand.
So we could, we could put a cap on it, and then when you bring that bill in, and then it will go, I mean, so we don't have to table it, we can put an amount not to exceed this, and then he brings that in, and we give him that amount.
Yep.
Am I correct in Gary?
You, you, you can do that, yes. You could put a cap on what you're willing to pay, but you also need to consider. I'm sure you have, but the amount of tax increment that this generates and the amount of tax increment that it, that adding more of this will generate.
We, we could look at it, and, and I want to thank you for investing in Kiwanee. You're doing amazing stuff, right? Hundred percent. I just want to ask the question for our utility as a council and a city, is the TIF is not the only hammer in the toolbox. We don't need to use it every time. Have we looked at the options if the revolving loan program or the small business interest payment program or the microloan would be the right best fit? Have we looked at our other options of what we can do here to help Vandovaldi Wellness? And, and can we do that if we were going to think about table on it and make sure that we use the right tool at the right time for the right purpose?
Um, so of the incentive programs that you mentioned, the, uh, small business, uh, program.
Not the SPP for COVID, I'm speaking about the revolve- revolving loan or like the small business interest payment requires you to have three, uh, employees, and this is indicating that, you know, we're going to have six or more, so.
Those would be fine for us. If, if he would like to borrow money and pay it back, uh, then, that, then I think what, uh, Councilman Sernovich is suggesting is that you should look at that option.
I would like us to look at options that we have, the, like, just in the pa- in the past two years, I have really not.
Few people come to us, few, I think few people look at those options until they're told no here.
Sure.
On, on a, on a grant, and then if they're told no on a grant, then they might be more likely to borrow money.
Well, tax increment financing should be used, we should be using that to leverage, in my opinion, public money to leverage private investment.
Investment, absolutely.
To end, to grow.
The tax base.
Incremental fund and a tax base. Now, Vandovaldi Wellness is one hundred percent doing wonderful things, but this particular investment might not do that. So I just want to make sure that we're looking at our other loan programs. Um, as interest rates are high, I don't blame people for coming to ask for money for sure, but if we can help them avoid or lower or reduce those loan costs, we can still keep private investment going. I just, you know, offer that for consideration.
I, I, I fully, fully agree, um, but it's, it's not my position to tell people, no, you should look at this or you should, have you thought about borrowing money and we'll, you know, pay the interest? Or have you thought about borrowing money from the revolving loan program? If they submit an application, I'll, I'll bring it to you and you.
I do think it's our responsibility as a city to help inform our citizens of what the options are at their disposal and to be proactive in that, in that manner.
I, I would presume that if, if someone has the application, they know where to find the applications.
I would not make that presumption.
I mean, I can't disagree with you, Adam, that TIF is for. Driving more money to come into it and increase in that and, and getting that and, and investment in an AC unit. Um, some painting, some carpentry work and electrical work is not the right avenue for TIF. We have approved parking lots, we have approved roofs before, we have approved other things that aren't going to generate the TIF dollars. Because they have that, like you said, the staple of the community that, that, that gives them that money to do it, and it's going to generate other dollars. Having these three hyperbaric chambers around, so, I mean, case-by-case, I think is the way we do it. I don't disagree with you that the TIF money shouldn't be used for some instances, but. I, I think this one here personally is geared at more than just generating more tax revenue. We're going to have, I mean, we're within a sixty-mile radius, we're the only ones that have this.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, Peoria, Quad Cities, I do think in four or five years, you are going to see these type of, you know, just clinics with ten of these, and they're just cranking out, seeing neurological and autoimmune conditions. I do think we're ahead of the curve and, and, you know, right now, yeah, they got to come here, you know, or to this town and, and, uh, you know, and, and we're just getting started with educating the community, you know? I hope in six months, a, a year from now, it's my job, that's our goal this year, is to educate the community so people now know, uh, hyperbaric oxygen therapy and, and our goal is to be that brand. And you say hyperbaric oxygen therapy and you, 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 you think Vandovaldi Wellness Center and you, you know Kiwanee, Illinois, so. Yeah, so our goal is to educate the community and kind of put Kiwanee on the map with goods and, and Sernos and, and Vandovaldi Wellness Center and Deluxe Car Wash, man, so this is it.
So you haven't ceased doing your other services.
No, nope, nope, not at all.
You still continue with your usual services, this is something you've added.
Yep, this is something we've added, so this is, this is like, uh, we grew a practice within a practice. So, so this is a Vandovaldi Wellness Center prac- or, you know, this is Vandovaldi Wellness Center hyperbarics.
So how much would you, just a rough estimate, do you think what you've added so far has increased your business?
Yeah, so, so it's about, um, it's a third, so last year it was a third of our services. So, yeah, and, and that was with one, and we didn't get the second one with September.
So just with one, you've increased by a third?
So, uh, we didn't increase by a third, but it was a third of our, of our services that we provided.
But can you give me a rough estimate, you know, how much your business increased with this?
Oh, so it probably went up like fifteen percent and increased.
That's just the one, or is that all three?
That was with two, so we, the third one we just added this February, and we've barely been able to use it just with between construction and, and then, then this one.
So you, you have increased your tax base.
Absolutely, absolutely, we've increased our, 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 our services and we've increased the radius of, of where we're reaching patients. Never have before as Illinois Neurological Institute called our office and referred patients. Never before as an oncologist from Galesburg called our office and referred patients. Um, we've had, been blessed with, uh, you know, medical doctor referrals in the past, but, but not, not, we haven't seen what we've seen thus far. And, and, and the results are, the results are, um, the results are jaw-dropping, post-stroke recover- I mean, just stuff that, um, is very, very difficult to treat. Now, we don't cure these conditions, right, where there's no cure for dementia, no cure for Parkinson or MS, but, but you can impede the progression of it. So it's a regenerative therapy, so it regenerates new tissue. So, um, it releases stem cells. So it releases stem cells for the nervous system, so brain stem cells, nerve stem cells, tendon ligament stem cells, and then it creates angiogenesis with this, which is a new capillary network. So, so that's why it can impede the progression of these neurological conditions. That's why it heals a wound right here that they've used for two hundred years is for all that science that I've just talked about, right? Regenerating new tissue. So the same science and physiology needed to heal a wound right here on this tissue that they've used for two hundred years is the same science and physiology needed to heal a wound on your brain. You just need special imaging to do this. Now, once again, this is an acute condition, and many times you can heal a wound right here and you're done. Now, patient two, so patients who see positive results with Parkinson's, MS or neurological conditions, to maintain those results, they do need maintenance care. Because otherwise, that would be a cure. If it's just like, hey, you did your thirty hours, you're good to go, you get to keep your benefits forever, then that would be a cure. You know, this is not a cure for those conditions. So this is just ideally being able to keep patients at home and not having to sell the farm and put them in a, you know, a long-term living, you know, facility.
Other questions? Chad, I was here, or any other suggestions, ideas?
Actually, I just, it's awesome.
Thank you, it's exciting, we're excited, um, you know, the community's excited, or, you know, or we're excited about it.
Chris, you suggested possibly setting a cap here so it doesn't have to come back.
Yeah.
Further that suggestion of an amount?
This is, this is a step where we're figuring out what to tell the attorney.
Yeah.
If we put a number in it and.
I do not exceed amount.
Well, but even then, if.
Oh, he's got a.
He's got, it's going to take them a couple of weeks, you're not going to meet again until.
Yeah, I could come back or, you know, we're supposed to get that work done.
He'll have a number by the time we meet again.
Yeah, next Tuesday, a week from, uh, when we get to work.
Good.
So this is just to get the.
This is, do you want to even consider going forward with? Additional TIF. On something that's not going to generate.
TIF.
TIF increment.
Correct.
And I, and I hear what.
I mean, I, yeah.
I hear some that are, yes, and, and I think.
I think we, we haven't met the threshold, the burden proof for TIF, but you do have six jobs created. Could you maybe tell, give, give us something to hold on to here? Did your investment in this endeavor literally create six jobs? Like, we have six FTE in this town now, and that's what we're supporting?
So, uh, I guess with the six jobs, we have four employees, eh, eh, five, including me.
Sure.
So, you know, I guess, I, I don't know if I misunderstood that.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, I think.
But like your investment here, you hired more people?
Yeah, yep, so we have, uh, one, we hired one more, uh, employee, yep. Yeah, so I guess I was under, misunderstood that those, you know, the.
You're counting construction people?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Even one could be worth sixteen thousand dollars. You know? I just, I just want to hold a standard on what we use TIF for, so we are moving our community forward economically.
I think that's a.
That's very positive. I, yeah. I mean, I agree with you.
Nothing else, he's bringing people to the community.
I mean, they, they're wise. Not only bring them one job in, but the tourism dollars, I mean, yes, that.
How long does one of these sessions last?
So sixty or ninety minutes, depending on the condition.
So depending on time of day that their appointment is, you know, they could be. Punch while they're here, or?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, like, once again, their, majority of these patients are coming from, or a lot of them are coming from the surrounding areas. Um, depending on the condition, um, you know, it takes thirty or forty hours, so, so, I mean, if a patient's, you know, got a significant neuro, significant neurodegenerative disease, then they're doing forty hours. So they're, they're coming to Kiwanee forty times, you know, in six weeks, when otherwise they maybe not even attended Kiwanee. Yeah, so, so I understand, you know, I, you know, when filling this out, I was, you know, unsure if this would qualify, so, so I totally get it. But also, I think, you know, I guess my thing is, is TIF, you know, one definition of TIF is growth and development and, and I think that's, this is a prime example of growth and development. I think it's, once again, um, we're ahead of the curve and, and it's cutting-edge therapy that, that no community in this area has, not even your, your Peoria's or the Quad Cities. So very, very unique opportunity, um, and, and unique therapy for, for a town of this size and, and this community, so, um, impacting lives and impacting, impacting lives like.
You can't, there are money that can value health, life.
So, so, you know, these sessions are, are fairly expensive, but, but once again, kind of going off your, your sentiment is, well, if it takes three thousand dollars to get my kid right.
Yes, sir.
Whatever, you know what I mean, and, and we could, I could give you a laundry list of testimonials if that would help too, you know, because, because we are, uh, undoubtedly doing things that I didn't think uh, my office or, or myself, uh, would be able to do, touch families and, and touch, touch, you know, their, their homes and their houses. Like, like I didn't think we would ever be able to do with, uh, until we, till we brought this therapy, you know, to, to our office.
I, I think we look at this two ways and, and the, the, the practical way to look at it is, TIF is here to, TIF is designed to regenerate the money to go back into the account. You know, um, when we talked about it earlier, I have the number down, it was like three hundred something thousand, three hundred forty-three thousand it generated, um, in twenty twenty two, twenty, what, and then it went up to four hundred ninety-three thousand, right? We have to find a way to replenish these funds. Is this going to generate sixteen to twenty thousand dollars in extra TIF incremental financing that, that will go back into that account? No, it's not going to, it doesn't qualify technically for what TIF is intended for. TIF is intended for growth and development, but it's also got to be self-replenishing through that TIF account, this is not going to do it. But on the other side of it, we have also approved parking lots, we have done roofs, we have, we put twenty thousand dollars into a parking lot. Did that increase that over that span of that business to generate that money that's going to pay off that parking lot? No, but did it help that business, did it help that business owner in something at that moment? You've invested a lot of money into these and so are we going to be able to recoup this on this one? Probably not if we were to approve it, if you guys feel that way, but the amount of money, the amount of other things, the new, the one employee, the tourism dollars that you're going to generate from it, that's going to generate some revenue that will help pay off this amount that's going to come back to the city.
Exactly, yeah.
Forty, forty value is going down, that, that.
But, and that's the same thing we talked about before, why we do it case by case.
I, I agree, I agree, and I don't want to be a, a naysayer, but I am, I guess, but every dollar that we don't use towards getting ball for Kiwanee moving forward, when, uh, some, like a business like Chad's and, and, and like I said, like, you're doing amazing things, you're doing great things, but your ball is rolling, you know? So is this the best next dollar spent for Kiwanee to get other things going?
How many other people do we have?
Not just other things, but TIF is intended to also be used for public infrastructure investments and we're not doing any of that. Downtown has a, downtown has a grant, I know, but it's only doing a few blocks, we could be using some of this TIF money to improve other areas of our business district.
We, we used TIF to do the sidewalks, uh, curbs over by Weathersfield. If in, uh, we have multiple tips, there's tips all over town, but we've used if, but you're, I, I just crunched at the, we're not doing public improvements, but, but with this money.
With this money, okay, I'll, I'll accept that caveat, I mean, I don't.
Yes, I agree, and this, this is, we, this TIF is supposed to be our match for things like the downtown improvements that we're doing. It can be used as our match for the, uh, Seifraus to school grant. So there are public uses and, and very much, uh, so the, the public infrastructure improvements need to benefit from tax increment financing as well. Most communities, when they have tax increment financing, they say, we're going to limit the private sector side to fifty percent of what's generated. The other fifty percent is being used for public improvements, public parking lots, public sidewalks, public.
I use the tide of everybody.
I, I, I concur with that assessment.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Koenick?
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer?
I'm going to go with this because I've done it in the past for other products that have it, increased it, and I have to keep that precedent going forward for businesses, so I'm going to go with aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
I get what you're saying, man.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation. This is Motorcycle Awareness Month for May of two thousand twenty-five. Whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of our city and state, and whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education and awareness and whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduce fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion and whereas it is especially meaningful that the residents of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety and whereas the members of Central Illinois Abate Chapter of Abate of Illinois Incorporated in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness and respect of the residents of our city and state and whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organizations and whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within and throughout the great state of Illinois. Now, therefore, I, Gary Moore, Mayor of the City of Kiwanee in the great state of Illinois, in recognition of forty-three years of Central Illinois Abate Chapter of Abate of Illinois Incorporated and over three hundred fifty-two thousand three hundred eighteen registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of the continued role Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education and awareness, do hereby proclaim the month of May this year, two thousand and twenty-five, as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the City of Kiwanee and urge all motors to join in an effort to improve safety and awareness on our roadways. At witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Kiwanee to be affixed this twentieth day of April, two thousand and twenty-five.
Someone who rides a motorcycle, I'd like to extend that into June, July and August as well.
Any day before, right? And we have a discussion item only, uh, business license, this will be a discussion pertaining to massage establishments. Open the floor to our Chief of Police, Stephen Kaczynowski.
So I submit some documentation for you guys, reference the massage establishments in Kiwanee, see the little background. Um, the establishment themselves are not regulated by the state, it's the therapists, they have to have licensure through the state, uh, the establishment does not. Uh, there are some cities like the one I referenced, it's kind of like a boilerplate from Chatham, Illinois, down by Springfield, and then several, uh, collar cities by Chicago have adopted similar ordinances to address some of the issues with unlicensed massage therapists in their community. Uh, the issue with that is those sometimes bring in criminal elements that we have to address. Uh, so this gives us a little teeth to do it, it's not just a licensing issue, it's also ordinance, it was pretty, I don't know if you had to go through it all, I honestly haven't been able to dive deep into that ordinance all the way. Uh, but I'm going to do that and see what fits the needs of Kiwanee, but it does give us some, um, teeth to deal with possible issues. So any questions?
I'm in favor.
Ask someone a question about that or about the ordinance for massage, is that a concern about, especially the one we have in Kiwanee, these people licensed, so I think.
And, I mean, there are a couple of things I want to bring up with that is like there are fees established in the ordinance that was, uh, that I provided, um, you know, that's up to, I don't, I don't really care about that, it's not a big fee, you want to generate a lot of money, that's not really the goal here. Um, it does require like background checks, that's fairly just manpower, um, the fingerprinting is a state fee that we would have to implement with them, but it's fairly low, it's not very much money for the, um, therapist to use, so, the ones that are doing it right, I don't want to overcharge them, it's the elements that are there, we have to look out for.
But this, now this includes massages, like businesses that are located in residence as well as, uh, brick and mortar?
Uh. It, yeah.
The limitation of location.
Yeah, it's about location, so it wouldn't be just, just like traveling massage people, um, that's not really what this is going after.
Got to be B two.
What would you suggest as far as, um, some of these places that have already been well-established in Kiwanee, been here for quite some time?
So I, I think we could look at like grandfathering them in if they have met the requirements that we're going to propose or state, the big thing is the license through the state, make sure they have that. Um, there's a lot of things about like facilities in there that I read, um, like number of bathrooms and stuff like that, I'm not really concerned about that, big thing is compliance with state law.
You know how thorough the state is when they issue these licenses as far as back, do they do background investigations on any of these people?
I can't speak for what they do, if they're supposed to, so, yes, probably.
Are there people that slip the, the, the cracks on that?
I'm sure there, sure there are.
Any scenario, you're going to have cracks as people fall through. What were you thinking as far as, uh, the businesses that would be grandfathered in, would you still check the licenses and do background investigations for purposes of this ordinance?
Yeah, so we would, we treat everybody fairly, uh, and we would make sure they're in compliance with what we're going to propose and, you know, it's going to follow a lot, a lot of that, uh, I probably won't get too particular with some of the things.
The only thing we'd grandfather them in is if they're in a residential area. Not the location, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm, I'm more suggesting like the actual location, wherever there are, there's a couple in town that are stores, where you walk into, not someone's house. Uh, we would look at, look at their licensing through the state, so we did a search, um, of licensed therapists in Kiwanee and most of them have compliance. There's an issue with another one that brought this to our attention. And they don't have licensed therapists.
I would definitely like to move forward with, with an ordinance.
Same.
And it's, like I said, that, that ordinance that I provide is very long, so if you guys skip through it sometime and, uh, see something that you do like or don't like, just shoot me an email.
Thank you, Chief. We'll move on to the second discussion.
Say, where are you going? Been a long day, a week already, I don't know what it is.
Updating cell of, of prohibited drugs ordinance, this discussion item will pertain to updating the cell of deuterius drugs prohibited ordinance.
So, uh, I think we touched on this ordinance last year a little bit, uh, I'm sorry, I'm just getting this stuff in order. But, um, sorry. So we have some issues currently now, um, with THC basically products, um, this is not going to deal with licensed dispensaries, um, it's not going to deal with like hemp-derived products. So specifically for what we know as cannabis that we all know what it is. Um, right now the state law says any products related to this can contain like point zero zero three percent THC, which is a very, very low amount, you wouldn't even feel it. Uh, however, recently we've had some court decisions that have ruled our testing process that we use at the, when we look for a quantitative test of what that contains, that percent, not that it contains it, but like how much to not be legal, or, and it changes the composition and the THC is higher than the actual raw product, which was, what the state law is regulating. Uh, a lot of cities have followed these kind of ordinances to deal with these products, there are places in town that do sell things that we as law enforcement know to be marijuana. Uh, this is probably the stuff that was available to us when we were younger, it's not the high-level product that you're seeing nowadays. Um, so obviously that's an issue if it goes unregulated. That's what we are trying to address and get those products off the shelves for citizens and children to go in and get, because they are available at places that kids can go to.
I know that I have received complaints, one of our local nursing homes had a resident that out with a family member and came back and with that product, had it hidden and managed to get it into the nursing home and created a lot of problems and I know one of the school districts had an issue that was passed on to me.
So we've been dealing with this for a while, we've been doing investigations into it, and I'll tell you just bluntly, I have no problem getting this out in the public is that, that we sent our covers in and we required, we acquired cannabis. It, it was seventy-five percent THC, just on the shelf, so that's a problem. So this ordinance will give us a little teeth to deal with it now, um, hopefully this will be taken care of in spring session coming up.
Definitely support this change.
Yeah, definitely appreciate you getting out ahead of this, Chief, um, this is, uh, this product continues to evolve much faster than our codes and ordinances, ordinances and laws, uh, can keep up. Um, I saw in their beverages.
Yep.
There are T F's beverages.
So is that something that will be at Top Deck or is that something that, like, what are the regulations for that, will that be available other places or?
Yeah, so like, like places like a dispensary do have, uh, drinkable cannabis products, THC products, um, you know, that's not what this ordinance is touching, we're not touch, touching dispensaries that are licensed by the state of Illinois. That's taken care of, it's the places that are unlicensed that are getting their hands on this, usually through illegal means or shipping, and it's just readily available nowadays. And if you looked at it, if you saw a product that you saw that they talked about in the nursing home, you'd be like, this is cannabis, it's.
It is.
We're not talking about little things, they're like, oh, maybe, no, this is definitely marijuana.
Yeah, I'd say I definitely support the changing of this. Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We will move right along to Council Communications. Adam, we're putting you on the hot spot right off the bat, you're going first.
I want to thank, uh, I want to thank citizens of Kiwanee for the support on the past election, I'm truly blessed and honored to be on the city council. Um, and I'm excited to get to work for all the citizens of Kiwanee, so I really appreciate all the support. Um, and, uh, again, just look forward to working for everybody. Um, I also want to, uh, give a welcome and congratulations to Wayne and David Weebler, uh, new owners of the Harley Davidson, uh, dealership on North Main Street. They had their grand opening this past Saturday, I want to welcome them to Kiwanee and we all wish them the best, we appreciate their investment in our community. And lastly, I want to thank the Packys for their, for their years of service to our community as well, thank you.
If I can just add a little bit to that Weebler one, uh, you know, that also marks the end of, uh, of a era in Kiwanee with Reiman's Harley Davison's, Roger Reiman and his dad Hank opened the Harley Davidson store in nineteen forty-seven. And then in nineteen ninety-eight, after Roger's passing, the store was purchased by Denny Packy and Denny, along with his son Scott, owned and operated Reiman's Harley Davidson until selling it to Weebler's. Well, Chris, I'm not going to make you go last two weeks in a row, because we started with Steve last week, so we'll go with you next, Chris.
Sounds good, uh, I just want to welcome Adam to the council, can, um, really excited to have you on. Um, and then congrats on your retirement, so, um, really excited for that and congrats to Tyrone for getting reelected, I look forward to future with you here. Um, and, uh, as the weather gets warmer, I say this every year, but, um, I've got a young daughter and young kids that ride bikes, so please be aware of the bikes, the scooters. When you're pulling in and out of your driveways, I know she zooms down a sidewalk and doesn't pay attention to a car backing out, so please be cautious of your surroundings when you see kids around, because they're all.
you see kids around, because they're all over right now as summer's approaching and kids are out, um, riding their bikes, so, um, that's all I have.
Baker?
Man a few words, always.
Uh, congratulations, Adam, look forward to working with you. Um, Tyrone, sorry you gotta sit next to me again. And thank you to those that hung in for this marathon that we've been part of, I feel like we're kind of all family at this point, so, um, that's all I have.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot, just a few short things. On behalf of the city of Kiwanee, I'd like to offer condolences to the family and friends of Edith, Edie Aldrin. Edie was a longtime employee of the city, working as a telecommunicator with the police department. I, I enjoyed working with her for a number of years and, uh, you always knew where you stood with her, she let you know if you were wrong. Kiwanee Park District, their sponsored soccer teams resumed this past Saturday, so, you know, if you wanna, if soccer's your thing, you wanna go out and watch the kids play soccer, you know, they're every Saturday, and there's a couple weekdays they play out there, I don't remember what the weekdays...
Uh, Wednesdays.
Wednesdays, so Saturdays and Wednesdays. And then, uh, I've noticed the traffic lights at Main and Prospect, they are, don't seem to be in sync, and from what I've seen, the sensors that switch the lights are not working. They, they will switch every so often without any cars there at all, so I, I think they need, and I haven't actually timed it, but it seems like the traffic for Prospect has a longer green light than Main Street even. I said, I haven't timed that, so I may be off on that, but it does, those lights are definitely...
Yeah, as somebody that travels down Prospect, I'm good.
And when you say, when you say not synced, what do you mean by that?
The, the timing, I mean, like I say, the, the appears from, like I said, I've never actually got a stopwatch out of time to, but it seemed like, like I said, the Prospect traffic, the green light is longer for Prospect than it is for Main Street, and it doesn't matter if there's a car waiting to pass or not, it'll switch without, so I'm guessing the, the road sensors that activate the lights are, they're not working properly.
He's right, I'd hate to admit it, because it benefits me, but when I turn down Chestnut and go to Prospect to go to Main, if I turn and it's green, it will stay green before, like it would, even if I got...
It's a long time.
It would.
So it's almost like it's backwards?
Yes.
And like I say, remember the sensor activation is not operating.
Those, those ones are tricky, they're actually, the sensors underground are farther back than most people think, um, so that might be part of it, but we'll have them look into it.
Either way, they're not working.
Okay.
That's kinda opposite last year, I think a couple of years ago, they were just like going on Prospect, you waited for 10 minutes for that thing to switch.
Yep, and again, that was part of the sensor thing, we had to educate people, stay further back.
So we have no city announcements, so how about a motion to adjourn?
A motion, okay.
Please call the roll.
On, I did that quick. Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Colomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
We are adjourned, please be safe when you travel.